I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Nashville Town Council to order. Please let us please stand for our pledge and our prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, we just invite you into our meeting tonight to lead us and guide us. Give us your wisdom, your knowledge, to make the right decisions for the town and citizens of Nashville. Amen.
Amen.
All of our public comments tonight deal with issues on our agenda, so we'll wait until we get there to have those comments. So we will proceed, and our first item on our agenda is the Regency Estate Road Septic System and Failures. So at this time, is Mike Stotts going to discuss that for us?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just briefly, we're going to just talk about the septic systems in general, specifically over probably a little more than 12 to 15 homes in Regency, and then maybe 10 to 11 homes over off Suri Court Essex Road area. So these are residential houses that are in the city that may or may not be owned public water. Most of these are, if not all of them, that are on private sewer. So it's just like a system out in the county that when the facilities are used inside, it goes to a septic tank and then to a drain field that is located on the property. It never reaches the city system, the lift stations, and then ends up going to the Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant in Rocky Mount and is treated. Both of these locations are homes that were built in the mid-'70s, late-'70s. We do not allow homes within the town limits on septic anymore unless there's extenuating circumstances. These lots were permitted by the county at the time they were permitted. They were built when the homes were constructed, and over the years, they have began to fail. Some failing today, some, you know, begin to fail years ago, and they put Band-Aids on them and they lasted a little longer, and some are doing fine. All septic systems that go into the ground start failing on day one. It's just when you flush the first water into it, the ground begins to get saturated and over a period of time, it eventually no longer works. Today's rules require a repair field to be set aside for the replacement of this system. These lots do not have repair field systems just due to the size of them. Some of the lots over in Regency are around 15,000 square feet. Today, the county would not allow a septic system to go in a lot that was less than 20,000 square feet. A septic system is usually 3,000 to 5,000 square feet, so when you don't have that last 5,000 square foot, you don't have a repair area. So what's happening is, over the years, the septic systems or private systems should basically be maintained or cleaned out, pumped out and cleaned and inspected about every three to five years. As I was talking to Larry Taylor earlier, I have one in the county. I've pumped it out twice. I've been there 24 years. So it's not a common thing. Sometimes you just have issues in maintenance where you have to pump it out. But the researcher on the Internet, if that's going to be our source for the night, says every three to five years, we should be maintaining them. Things that help them last longer is not driving over them and compressing the soil and compacting it so the soil doesn't absorb the ground, not overloading them in, you know, design for a two-bedroom, and then convert the living room or the dining room or, you know, or a bonus room into a third bedroom or a fourth bedroom. They are designed for certain amounts of flow to go into them, so when we overload them, we accelerate the failure process of them. But maintenance, staying off of them, weather affects the length of them. When they're in a real wet season, obviously the ground is saturated, so water, you know, can't absorb into the ground if the ground is already saturated. Roots and tree systems grow into them. That affects the life expectancy of them. There are some in the county that have been here for over 100 years and are working fine. There are some that have been in the ground 10 years and have started to fail. So there's no real, we just don't know how long they will last. It's a soil scientist going out with the county in most cases, looking at the perk rate of the soil, the infiltration rate of the water, and running calculations and putting in 80-foot of line or 100-foot of line, et cetera, depending on what the soil will absorb. It's not an exact science, but it's how it's done. Over the years, that is, we do a better job of it today than we did probably 40 or 50 years ago. So that's just an overview of what's happening and why septic systems are failing. Chemicals you put in your dishwasher or your, your, not your dishwasher, well, your dishwasher too, but your washing machine, you know, that effect that you don't want to put too much chlorox in them. They do operate with bugs eating the waste, and it's an anaerobic situation. So when you put cleaners into the system and you kill the bugs, you're killing the mechanism that's getting the waste treated and turning it back into the liquid that's absorbed into the ground. So garbage disposals are not allowed, and some houses put garbage disposals on these types of systems, and injecting food in it for the bugs to eat is not a good thing because they're eating that food waste instead of the waste that is their design to do. So that's just a quick overview of how septic systems work and all that, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have on it, but that's just how septic systems work.
Do you have any questions?
Mike said these systems out in Essex, on Essex Road in Regency, it looks like about 45 they're failing, so what's the answer to that?
We have to get them somehow off the private systems, own to the town system.
Okay, so that's the only alternative?
There's no doubt. That is the only alternative. That's the good long-term solution. Randy can talk about it a little bit, but he's reached out to the area council to look at some funding to assist this, the town, in assisting the homeowners to do this. But if we had a new neighborhood and we were building it from scratch, we would require them to build a lift station to pump it into our system, okay? Well, ideally, we'd want them to gravity it into our system. If they can't gravity it, then we pump it. We would not allow them, under this development period, to go with on-site septic soils within the town limits.
I have a question, and Mike, you probably can't answer it. Randy, have we canvassed the neighborhoods to find out how many people have at some time in the past had their septic tanks pumped out?
No, no, we haven't. You know, and not all these systems, as Mike had mentioned, are failing. Some are, and the degree is, you know, various. But knowing that we have a situation where we have neighborhoods in town that weren't built on the sanitary sewer, what I've proposed to the council, we talked about, is applying for CDBG money, Economic Development Block Grant money, because I'm fairly certain these neighborhoods will qualify for funding from that source. Those applications are due in September. One of the things I have to do is the target areas within these subdivisions will have to do a household, door-to-door household survey. That will document whether they are eligible or not, and if 51% of the people are of a certain income, at or below that, it's eligible. Then we can apply for the funding. That's in September. We'll know in March if we're going to get it, and then we can begin working with our engineer to design a system and install the system and actually construct it. The question that has come up from one property owner in one of these subdivisions, what happens in the meantime if my system completely fails? Is there anything the town can do to assist me? And we had one such incident on Essex Road. You know, we were able to work with that homeowner to put a pipe over the ground temporarily, out to the right-of-way, then down the road ditch through the culverts to the nearest manhole, and that's how that property is getting by right now. Myself, Lee Brown, and Mark Edwards, the town attorney, we met with the two property owners immediately downstream of that house to see if we could get easements to go up through the backyard. We would have the town crew just simply extend a line up the back to this property owner's property, and then they would have access that way. We couldn't get the easement from the one property owner. Met with us, talked with us for a couple hours, and seemed agreeable, but the easement was not forthcoming. So now we're pursuing this idea of actually putting a system, extending the collection system in these, but what do we do in the meantime is what another property owner wants to know. And maybe the solution is cleaning it. I don't know. I guess I'll refer that back to Mike.
Yeah, so let me tell you what isn't the solution. The solution isn't to go in there with a town-owned public lift station and to spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to put one or two houses on it. Our thought right now is to do systems similar to what they do at the beach or when everybody's below the road. Each individual house would have their own septic tank system like they do now, and instead of it going to a drain field, it drains into a pumping chamber, and the individual pump will pump up to a public force main in the road. The town will maintain and own the force main in the public right-of-way, and the homeowner will be responsible for the pump and the tank and maintenance on that, on their property, just like they are now. That seems to be the most cost-effective and efficient way of solving the issue long-term. The house that is on the temporary system, I just caution, that is an emergency situation only. We certainly don't need 15 houses with a 1-inch pipe laying across the ground, going anywhere. That's just, it's set up for disaster, but on an emergency situation, you have to do what you have to do.
And it's not sanitary either to have it doing. I rode by that residence several times, not knowing what that pipe was for, until somebody finally told me what it was, and I went, "You got to be kidding." And I know we've applied, well, getting ready to apply for grants in September, but if we've got this many residents having that kind of problem, we can't wait for that grant to be approved. We'll have pipes everywhere, and personally, I would not want a pipe taking care of business. But I think what we probably need to do for a short fix until we get a grant approved, because I have, I'm pretty confident that those residents out there, because I'm one of the ones that built one of the houses out there back in '75, I'm quite sure a lot of the residents would be willing to tap onto the town sewer line, but we've got to run it. You've got to get approval to lay it out there. But I think everybody should, and they may not even know that they are responsible for pumping those septic tanks out, because when I sold my residence out there, the lady did have a problem because she was doing more than it was set up to be, like you say, number of people in the household, and she thought, wanted to know what the problem was or what she, could she do to fix, or what the town could do to fix it. And I informed her that the first thing you need to do is get the tank pumped out and see if that would resolve the problem. I haven't heard anything else from her, so I'm still fairly sure that that probably solved her problems for a while, but...
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, there are a lot of factors that go into it. That is definitely a short-term fix.
That's a short-term fix.
It is not a long-term solution, because over, like, if we have a dry summer, we probably won't have any failing. If it rains every other day for the next six months, like it has for the previous year and a half, it is not going to work. Yes, ma'am?
So I just had a question. What we were looking at for the potential for the grant and doing this project in the future was gravity flow, correct? So what we're looking at now is what you're saying, that a pump?
We've looked at both. We've looked at both.
Okay, so how much is it for the alternative? Because I think we've only gone through the gravity flow potential solution.
Yeah. I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head. I can tell you the one for Regency is a gravity sewer line under 64 to tie to the sewer outfall line. And several of you might remember, the last time we bored under 64, it was not a pretty picture. Now, there's a difference between putting a 30-inch pipe under 64 and putting an 8-inch pipe, but it can get costly. It can get to the tunes of half millions or a million dollars to, you know, to solve. So there's no doubt the more cost-efficient way would be to individually pump them into a low-pressure force main.
And can that be done at Regency? Can that be done incrementally? You know, where as it fails, we fix it for one, or is this something that has to be a global project that occurs all at once?
Yes and no. You have to do the one on the lowest end, 100%, and then you can do the ones incrementally up, and it doesn't matter if five or three is added or what order they're added. But you cannot put in a line and then it go all the way downhill and then hook up number eight.
So that's the answer for Regency, but not the answer for Essex?
Essex will gravity flow.
Okay.
So a traditional gravity flow system, and Kevin Barnett will put together cost estimates, just because I cussed him till he would, $350,000 for a gravity flow sewer in Essex Road, and if you go with the small starter pump stations in Regency, that would be in the neighborhood of $125,000 to $150,000. Now, if we go the route of putting a bore underneath 64 and going to the fallout line, then we could gravity flow the balance of Regency, but Kevin projects that at $600,000. And if we're getting a grant for 80% of it, maybe we do consider that.
The good news about the Regency is it puts sewer on the Regency side, and it has undeveloped land to the west of town. Yeah, east, thank you. Yeah, east, thank you.
So if we did put a, if we did put a crossing under 64, we could pick up more land than just, than just the 21 homes that are on septic systems in the Regency subdivision now. One of the things that Kevin had mentioned as far as helping homeowners temporarily, and Mike is correct, if it's dry, we probably don't have much to worry about. These systems are going to continue to work okay. The system in Regency that's having problems, they had the worst problems when we had rain every other day for months and months. And, you know, there is the option with our back truck, we can come out if the homeowner would make their septic tank opening accessible to us. We could simply drive up to it and suck it out. That would give them several days, maybe to a month, of continued operation. That's something the town could do. I don't know if you want to consider that. Also, these emergency, that won't work for all of them. An emergency over the land route, it worked on Regency because we had road ditch and we had culverts underneath all the driveways, and we were able to do that without anybody having to drive over it, trip over it, or be encumbered with it in any way. Larry's right. It's there. You see it every time you drive by. Mike, I don't know if you have any other temporary...
The, once, the answer is not really. Once they start failing, they fail faster and faster, even when you repair them. It's not like we're going to have a great summer and then not have this issue next winter. The issue will continue to propagate.
Any questions?
So right now, we're looking at 45?
Forty-five septic tanks, but not all of them are failing. So we have two that we know are failing right now.
That's correct.
Now, we have the homeowner here from Regency.
Yeah, she's on it. She's going to speak in just a moment. State your name and your address, please.
My name's Elizabeth Middleton Jones, and I reside at 218 Regency Drive. I am one of the homeowners that, if you can imagine, in the wet season at the end of the year, could not wash, could not shower, you know, very scared because you didn't know whether your system was going to back up or what it was going to do, so it was hard. And my husband and I thought the best thing for us to do was to contact the town, and let's get on the, you know, the septic system of, you know, the town of Nashville. My neighbor, next-door neighbor, is on it. We share driveways, but then I can't get on it. It's very frustrating. I did go and speak with Randy, and he gave me my options, but, you know, the options I didn't want to hear because I want to get on the town, not next year, not the year after, because I don't know what's going to happen. Going to the laundromat, not knowing, you know, this week, I've already checked the weather, and I'm doing that every week now because I don't know, you know, what's going to happen. So any consideration of something that could happen in the near future would be appreciated. I have pumped in, since probably November, I have pumped my septic system, and I did that twice, and that did not help. We've pumped it over the years. I've been in the, in that house. My family's been in that house since 1986. So we've taken pretty good care of our system. I didn't know whether it was the system. I've replaced all of my pipes in my house, every last one of them, to try to see whether or not that was the issue, but it is truly the septic system, and I need to do something, even if, you know, it's dry. I feel like my family still has to do something because I don't want to live. I'm planning on being here. I'm 53 now, and I plan on being in that house. I really don't plan on going anywhere. I've, you know, I'll be here probably until, so, and I'm hoping that until is a long time. So, you know, I just need to do something, and I appreciate your time. And Ms. Burns, I appreciate her. She has kept me in the loop. She responded to me, and I truly appreciate that and truly appreciate your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
And did you say your neighbor is hooked on to the city sewer?
Yeah, I, my neighbor is hooked on, and I know Randy can probably explain it a little bit better, but it's my house, my neighbor, and then my neighbor, the, what do you call it, the manhole is in the driveway of my next neighbor. Now, I'm not sure if that neighbor is on the city town or not, but it's, let Randy explain it to you, play the whole better and give you all the fly I can.
Well, Mrs. Jones's immediate neighbor set high up in elevation the gravity flow. Her house does not. Her plumbing is below the elevation of the manhole, and it's a little deceiving, and I've had Ronnie and the guys go out there and look twice because when you stand there and look, you know, well, that house isn't hardly any lower in elevation than these, but it truly is, and it won't gravity flow. So that means, you know, there's the option of putting a pump in their septic tank, going out to the front underground under two driveways and dump into that manhole, but there's cost to that, and I don't know temporarily if we're working for this permanent solution, if the town would want to consider sharing in some of that cost temporarily or not.
Now, what would the cost be for that temporary solution?
Approximately $8,000. And now we put it underground and not...
Yeah, and that would be a permanent solution in that case because there's a gravity line in front of the house already?
Near the house.
Yeah, yeah, so that could be a permanent solution into a manhole. If your neighbor to your low side is there, that means there's a line in front of their house, Randy.
So her house is here, and this neighbor has it. This one, I think, has a temporary...
They've built houses there over the years that have it set, but I don't want to...
So let me correct that.
She is the first, she is the second house where the gravity stops, so she is, there's a house here that's on the system, there's a neighbor, and then there's her house, so she does not have it in. So it would be a temporary solution until the new line was either gravityed under 64 or the force, permanent force main was put in to serve all the homes.
So this $125,000 to $150,000, Randy, that's for all of those homes to be done with the pump and the tank?
That is the estimate to put a small diameter city-owned and maintain force main that they could all hook up to. They would all have their own individual pumps that would pump into that bigger pipe, and then that bigger pipe would go uphill to the nearest manhole and empty into the gravity flow.
So if we were to do this incrementally, doing the lowest house and then the one that's failing, do we know what the cost would be for that?
Not right on hand, no.
Okay.
But I think we have the opportunity. I don't mean to play roulette with the Joneses' situation here, because there's few things worse in life than drain problems, but with theirs being the only one that we are knowledgeable of, the application is in September, the award is in March. I feel fairly confident we're going to get grant money to help these folks in both of these neighborhoods. We could have a system in place by the fall of 2022.
Yeah, I do understand, though, that, you know, she's checking the weather daily, not knowing what's happening, and this will be a problem that comes again in a heavy, heavy rain. And since she has pumped several times, the vac truck doing it doesn't sound like it's a solution. So maybe in her particular case and any other homeowner cases where we have an actual failing septic tank, we can, you know, at least partially cover that $8,000 temporary solution in the meantime while we wait for grant funding?
Well, she needs some help. She needs some help now.
Right, exactly. We need to do something soon. So I don't know what everyone's thoughts are.
Well...
I mean, we have, on the Essex property, we had a little bit of a different solution because it's an income generating property. So we can have maybe a short application process, which just shows that you're a homeowner, you know, that you're not generating income off of your property, renting it, and if that's the case, then I don't know how much of a percentage we want to take care of for the temporary solution, but at least help our citizens until we can get the permanent solution in place.
Any other comments?
Are there any other grant opportunities? I know CDBG is a major grant that we, you make application, and then there is the waiting period, but are there any other funds you're aware of, Randy, that are potentially available to help her and us?
There is. You know, the American Recovery Act, the town of Nashville slated to get $1.63 million, and there are nine different categories the town can spend that money on. What Sam and I have been advised by the League of Cities, the rules haven't been all completely written on how you can spend this money, but they're fairly safe. If you use it on water and sewer infrastructure, it's probably the best way to use that money. And we could do these systems with that pot of money if you wanted to, and we're expecting half of that money at mid-May, into May, somewhere in there. So if you didn't want to pursue the CDBG grant and you wanted to get started with this sooner, there would be a source of money to do that. I know $1.63 million sounds like a lot of money, but we got cost estimates on eliminating two lift stations in Cottonwood and on Cypress Landing, and it's $900,000. So, I mean, there goes 70% of the money just on two solutions. It doesn't go as far as your tank.
Well, I think my question is related to her specific situation. We could use part of the American Recovery Act money?
Yeah.
Right.
I mean...
I wasn't thinking in terms of the whole system.
Right.
If you wanted to have a standing offer, if you're a non-income-producing property in these two subdivisions and your system fails, the town will help you up to half of the cost, not to exceed $10,000.
And you have attempted to purge your system, have your system pumped, and it did not resolve. Now, if, now, are you saying if we use this money for that, we cannot apply for the CB, CBDG?
No, the CBDG, if we do the entire project...
But we're not, we're just doing...
Right, if we're just giving her individual temporary solution, we can still do the CBDG grant for the entire thing.
Okay, right, okay.
So Ms. Jones, does this help resolve your issue in the short term? So Ms. Jones, does this help resolve your issue in the, the short term?
For the short term, we're just going to talk to my husband, but it sounds better than nothing at all.
Okay. And we can always hold off and wait, you know, and see if it becomes an issue and, you know, maybe...
I don't, I don't know that. It's just hard, you know, waiting and not knowing from day to day when it's gonna rain for a month and, you know, I'm going to the laundromat and not taking a shower like I want to and flushing like I want to, so.
I understand.
Now, is your system working today?
Yeah.
As it should be?
Yeah, I mean, I still, yeah, I'm not gonna...
Yeah, right. Knock on wood.
You know, I still try not to lock 10 loads to close and, you know, I still take precautions.
Okay. But if we have a heavy rain, it's probably gonna back up.
I'm definitely gonna smell it and that's embarrassing too because, you know, maybe it's the one or two in the world that have gone on.
I understand.
Do I need to get a motion?
I think so.
Do I need your motion that we do this temporary fix for the, for Ms. Jones's residence?
So I move.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We're sorry you've had to deal with this and we thank you for coming. And we thank you, Mr. Stott, for giving us some idea of how we can help the total problem. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is, um, let me see. Is a request for, for proposals for core banking services. Sam, are you gonna do that for us?
Good evening. It is best practice to periodically review contracts to ensure that the town is receiving the highest quality services for the best prices available. Adhering to best practices, I recently requested proposals for core banking services and received four highly qualified responses from Providence Bank of Nashville, BBNT of Rocky Mount, Southern Bank of Nashville, and First Carolina Bank of Rocky Mount. After thoroughly reviewing the proposals, I recommend that the town retain its contract with Providence Bank. The town has had an outstanding relationship with Providence Bank since 2014. The bank is five-star rated through Bauer Financial, provides excellent and personalized customer service, and is the only bank that offers all services free of charge to the town while also paying interest on all accounts. Currently, the town holds one main operating account, four sub-accounts, and two money market accounts with Providence Bank. Providence also provides remote check depositing and credit cards to the town.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Sam? She gave us the information for each item in our packet.
Depends. They make a bid.
They did not.
Well, I'm glad we got a bank here in town and we don't have to try to, we don't choose one in Rocky Mount. We need to keep it home the best we can. And I'm glad Providence Bank was one that she chose to go with. And I moved that we go ahead and continue to allow her to keep servicing with Providence Bank.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No issues here. Our next item on our agenda is the Cook Road Water Extension Project and West Nashville Commerce Park Wetland Relocation Project. Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that I've discussed with the council in the past. Our West Commerce, our West Nashville Commerce Park is approximately 60 acres out there. We have one tenant so far, Astero Labs, and they're doing fine. The water line that services that dead ends in the park and it's fed from Alston Street along Cook. And even though it's a fairly good sized main, it's an eight-inch main, when you get to the, when you get to the park, it's, the volume of water it delivers is shy of what's really desired for fire protection. And if we have a building that goes out there and it's larger than 10,000 square feet and it's required to be sprinkled, that, that building is gonna have to put in some type of pump system to ensure that it has fire protection available for its sprinkler system.
Randy, I have a question. You know, when we received a grant to get that water line out there, was that not considered?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
I mean, we got, we received a grant for that water line.
Yeah, we receive grant money to put in a lift station, a small, and, and a force main back to the Alston Street Lift Station and a water main all the way out to it. And if I remember right, it was in the neighborhood of $580,000 of grant money the town received to help develop the West Nashville Commerce Park. So...
Randy, do you remember that?
Yeah, I remember.
And there was, there was never any mention about problems with sprinklers or fire concerns or anything like that? This is the first I've heard of that. And I'm thinking, what happened when we got that grant?
Well, when the town got the grant, they put in the infrastructure and we have water and sewer out there.
But apparently it's not adequate.
For fire protection, I mean, you can ask the fire chief. He's the one who brought to my attention that, you know, we don't get 1,000 gallons a minute out of those hydrants out there. It's far below that. And that's what they like to have for fire protection. Now, what I'm proposing is we apply for Golden Leaf grant money. We apply for EDA, Economic Development Administration, money. And we continue the water main on Cook Road to the north and tie it into Western Avenue, basically at the base of the West Water Tower. That will give us all the flow we need for the West Commerce, the West Nashville Commerce Park. In order to make application for the EDA funding, it requires a preliminary engineering report be submitted along with the application. The preliminary engineering report, we have a proposal from Bartlett Engineering and Surveying and Wilson to do that preliminary engineering work on both the water. And if you guys will recall, when we did the land exchange with Lee Balance, he had land on the south side of Commerce Street, which is marshy and wetland and difficult to build on. So we exchanged for an equal acreage on the north side, which the town owned. We flip-flopped it. And at the time we did that, we talked about applying for grant money to effectively remove that three acres out of the wetland. So this engineering proposal also does that. Now, Golden Leaf money will not pay for wetland relocation. EDA money will. So I've included it in this preliminary engineering report cost, which is $10,750. So what I have before the council this evening is a request to approve this preliminary engineering report contract with Bartlett Engineering out of Wilson so that come June, we can make application to the Economic Development Administration for $900,000 and some change for the water and another, well, it would be, EDA funding is for 50% of the cost. And in, in the packet, I have the cost in there, which I'm sure you guys were able to see.
Now, when you say removing the wetlands, all we're talking about doing is building that, building that lot up, right?
We have to reroute the waterway to, to where the property lines would be.
Yeah, reditch it.
And it, and it's more than just filling it in. We have to go over on another part of the land and create an equal area, to my knowledge, to mitigate the wetland. And, and the requirements might even be for two to one. For, for every acre you fill in, you have to create two additional. And believe me, it's not a problem on that property. Most of that 60 acres already is wetland.
Sorry, getting back to the, were you done with the wetland portion? Getting back to the fire, I just had a quick question. So is it, is it inadequate for firefighting or is it just below the desired level? So like, we still could adequately fight a fire?
There's a fire out there, they're gonna pull water from it. Now, they're prob, they may have to sup, supplement that water supply with their tankers.
Right.
You know, you put too many fire trucks. I mean, those tank, those pumpers, they can do 1,200 gallons a minute. And if the hydrant isn't delivering that, it's gonna put stress on your main and potentially collapse your water main.
Now, what is the current building they're doing as far as sprinkler system?
They don't have to have one because they're 10,000 square feet and under.
So it's not currently an issue for the building that's there, but it will be an issue for the buildings that come?
If, if they're larger than 10,000 and are required to have a sprinkler system.
Now, are those houses on Cook Road? Are they on that line?
Number of them are, yes.
They're on that line?
A number of them. Not all of them.
What about sewer?
No, it's a force main, so they, unless they were to put a small grinder pump that would pump into that force main with some check valves, they wouldn't be able to tie to it. So we, we have the opportunity for, you know, a rather large project in cost to apply for some grant money to help offset that cost. But unfortunately, we gotta spend some money to make the application.
Well, if we want to develop the rest of that park out there, I don't see where we gotta charge.
Well, I agree when it comes to the fire protection portion of it. You know, that's something that I think we absolutely have to provide to current buildings and future buildings. But when it comes to the wetland mitigation, I mean, that's a large chunk of change. Is this...
Now, I was referring to the water line.
Okay, okay. And I guess, yeah, I, I mean, obviously we want to look at our budget and see if it even fits within and...
Yeah, I agree.
That's my concern with what we had to do last month related to that huge budget amendment. Before we were to commit the town to another $425,000, I think we need to have some updated numbers on where we stand in the water sewer fund. I don't necessarily have a problem with the preliminary engineering related to the water line, but maybe we can hold off on the wetland piece of that right now.
So the preliminary engineering report needed for the water line is 6,250. And 4,500 more is then for the preliminary engineering on relocating the drainage area and mitigating the wetlands. So, but you understand that land we swapped with Lee Balance, we will not be able to build upon it until we relocate that waterway and effectively remove that land from, from the wetland.
Was there an engineering report for the original water line that was, that we ran out there? That we had a grant for?
Stott's Engineering did that for us. I don't know where it is. I'd have to go find it.
Yeah, it's gonna be... So based on this, it seems like it was inadequate, you know?
Depends what, what the town was asking the engineer to do at the time. If it was just simply get water service to the park, you know, goal, objective achieved.
How long is the preliminary report good for? So if we get it done now, but we decide that we want to do this in another budget year?
As, as far as...
The grant goes.
If, if we get it now, we will use it to submit the grant. If we don't get the grant, we can, you know, the following year, we can make another application.
And once we submit the grant, are we locked in if we receive the grant?
Well, you, you always have the option not to do the project if you get the funding. You just either have to give it back if they give it to you or not go forward with the project. You know, one of the other things that this water looping or extension project does is, you know, we're going to have to acquire land across the railroad track and up to Western Avenue. We will do that under this project if it goes with an easement. We, we do have an application in to the, or to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the Cook Road Extension Project, which is a five, $1.5 million project in of itself. And it, it builds a new truck route type road from Industry Court due south through the Plyer Property to Old White Oak Road and to Cook Road, which would then give us much better access off 64 for the Nashville, the West Nashville Commerce Park. That, that application was, was given the thumbs up by the Rocky Mount NPO and now is in Raleigh to the DOT for consideration. There, there's, there's no estimate on when we might hear about that. It all depends upon the availability of funding. It all depends upon, you know, the, the number of points our application has compared to the other projects that were submitted. But it, it lays some groundwork for that road extension project.
And even if they do award it to us, we still don't know when it would take place.
Correct.
They may not start on for years after.
Poss, very, very possible, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think we need to take care of the water problem for fire protection because nobody else is gonna want to go out there now that we finding out that we don't have adequate water supply out there.
Yeah. The, the EDA grant application does require the pledging of jobs. And, and I think you guys have heard me say, we are working with Nash County Economic Development on a prospect for five acres in the West Nashville Commerce Park. And those would be the jobs sufficient. EDA has had their coffers enhanced significantly with the American Recovery Act. So our chances of getting this grant versus before they had that money, according to the EDA staff, are much better than they were prior.
What are the desires of the council? Do I hear a motion? There's no motion?
I move that we go forward with the, extending the water line out there. But, but to hold off on the wetland relocation for right now.
Without the engineers for that.
Right, this is just for the preliminary reports.
Just for preliminary report for the water.
Yes, I second. One concern I do have, there were some issues that I had with the general conditions that were listed in here. There were answers given in an email. But he did not incorporate those answers into the conditions. So if we could just get the emailed answers incorporated in, like when the invoice is going to be sent out?
What's in red is the answer from the engineering firm on the questions that we put forth to them. And then he says in the email, the, in the last page of the, the incorporated those.
Well...
And they may not be dissatisfied.
He, I don't think he incorporated them. Like, he still didn't say when the, when the invoice was going to be sent out and still didn't put in there the 20% when that is, when that applies. And it's only if we want to contract with them for them to pay any governmental fees, then they have a 20% markup in it. But if we are to pay those on our own, that doesn't exist. The other one was the first one saying that payment is due upon receipt of the invoice and then pretty much immediately a penalty goes into place if it's not paid. But there's no indication as to when that comes out. Is it today? Is it after the completion of the project? When is that? And so I just needed clarification, but those were not incorporated. So if we can just get his answers into there, then I'm fine with it.
So we've had a, a motion that we do just the, the water line part and we've had a second. So all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye with the information that Kate has requested. Opposed? Motion carries.
I do want to make one comment, Mayor, related to this. I think we do need to go into this understanding that potentially if we go forward, then the town may possibly be looking at borrowing money in order to do their portion of the project.
Thank you for sharing that.
You may have to.
The next item on our agenda is contract with Nash County for billing and collecting the town's real estate and personal property taxes.
So the, the town can contract with Nash County to bill and collect the town's real estate and personal property taxes. A number of small towns in Nash County do do that already. The city of Rocky Mount takes care of their own. Nashville currently takes care of their own. And Spring Hope, all the other smaller towns contract with Nash County to bill and collect their property taxes. And Nash County charges 2% of what's collected as their fee. And then they pay you the rest of it. So you don't necessarily write a check to them. Sam and I were thinking about this. The staffing in our finance department right now is, is to the point where, you know, everybody's plate is full. And, and when it comes to property taxes, we, we have one staff person that does that with some help. And it takes about a month and a half of their time to do the billing, send out first notice, second notice, and then ultimately turn things over to, not necessarily collection, but the offset program, which is, is what we do. Nash County has a, a department... Nash County has a department, that's all they do, is bill and collect property taxes, and they have the staff and the time, the expertise and the knowledge to pursue collections much more thoroughly than what our town staff has the ability to do, because that's all they do. So when Sam and I were looking at it, you know, we put the, Sam put together a spreadsheet about what it costs us in-house to collect, what it would cost if we had Nash County. It's an increase over what we're, what our costs are right now, but we feel that there are some advantages in that the town's tax bill would be included in the same tax billing as Nash County's. You'd see on a line item for county tax and town tax, and it'd be all in one bill, and they would come at the exact same time, and more than that, people would be inclined to pay both at the same time. Way it is right now, Nash County almost always gets their tax bills out before we do, because we have to rely on their data and getting it before we can send ours out, and they make sure that they do theirs first, and then we get it. That's just the way it is. But, you know, they have a 99% collection rate, we have a 98% collection rate. It would cost approximately $46,903 for Nash County to collect our property taxes for us, to bill and collect. Sam, did you have anything you wanted to add there?
Well, yes, it would directly cost that, but some of those costs would be offset by some savings, not entirely, but some. For example, the financial software related to tax collections, we no longer would need to purchase that. Materials and supplies related to that, we no longer would need to purchase that. The advertising, and also just the employee time, that's not a direct savings, that is an indirect savings, but it is something. I would also like to add, there would be, this would be a change in how we collect stormwater fees. They do not collect stormwater fees for us. At this time, we do bill that on our annual tax bill, so we would have to do that on a monthly basis on our utility bills. We wouldn't have to make any changes to the language in the fee schedule, it's already written that way. We just have to, you know, can just start billing it that way. They also do not collect prior taxes, so we would still be responsible for doing that. I actually, at this time, have an RFP on our website, you can view that on our website. It's for collection service, third-party collection services, so I am looking actively into pursuing collections for delinquent taxes, so hopefully, we will have a solution for those in the future.
Am I reading your spreadsheet right, Sam, in that your comparison of Nashville versus Nash County, there's a little over $12,000 difference? Is that a net gain to the county if the county, I mean, to the town, if the county does the billing?
Yes, in the first year.
Potentially, okay.
In the first year. That is based on the most recent collection rate. At this time, Nash County's collection rate is higher. Usually, they're very neck and neck. That is also based on the credit that we will receive in the first year due to the money that we just spent on financial software. I've already negotiated that with the vendor, they're going to give us a credit back for that. You see that in the very first year, the cost of labor, our department would still need to spend some time in the first year collecting prior taxes. I estimate that about $7,000 worth of time, but you would see that number go down in the years subsequent.
So I see that the $12,000 savings to us in the first year, and then it seems the second year, that 5,000 savings for the collection software would still be made up by the fact that we wouldn't be collecting delinquent taxes from years past, so that 7,000 would potentially be coming down?
It would. It would be an indirect savings, I do want to point that out. You know, the savings is in the labor, and just the fact that it frees up my employees. I do want to stress, I do have one employee who's most, solely mainly responsible for collecting the taxes. She's not a specialist in tax collection, although she can do the job, and she does do it. Her main job is utility billing and collections, and that is a day-in and day-out job. She's more than overloaded with that, so this would allow her to focus on that, and as we know right now, that is something we definitely need to focus on and get right, so I think this would help with that.
My feeling is that we have always collected our taxes, the town. This has come before us before, and it was rejected. We have offloaded our parks and recreation to the county. We've given them our streets. We're going to give them our tax collections to at some point. We've lost control.
Well, on the other hand, this does streamline the process for the taxpayers. They would only have to deal with one bill rather than two, they only have to make one payment rather than two. It streamlines it for us, we just receive one monthly lump sum from them, and it just makes the process a lot simpler.
We invest in all of this software just recently, very expensive, thinking that it would make things easier for our employees, for instance, collecting taxes. Anna?
It has made things a lot easier.
Yeah.
It sure has.
The billing, I don't know if collection has ever been easy, only if someone else does.
Like I said, they've got a full staff who are specialized in collections, that's all they do.
Any comments from the other council members?
Well, I prefer to look at it more as a collaboration with the county. I don't look at it as a we versus them, and I think the more that we can develop this ongoing relationship to work together, the better off we're going to be. Nashville is the county seat for Nash County, and I think we've got to continue to work together.
So that means giving up all our lines?
You're going to have to come up to the mic.
No comment, please. Kate, do you have any comment?
I don't.
I move that we keep our tax collections in-house.
Do I hear a second?
Is this something we want to look at further? Do we want to table this for further discussion? I can see the benefits both ways, but I don't...
I think that's a great idea. Would you make that motion? Do we have time to?
Well, she has to, we have to act on her motion first.
It was not a second.
She didn't get a second, so it dies by a second. Okay.
Do I hear a motion that we table this then?
Somebody.
Yes, I second.
Is there a second?
I'm not totally convinced yet.
Was there a second?
Oh, I second, yes, I'm sorry. I can see both Louise's and Lynn's point, yes.
Until you look at it and study it some more, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Kate, we'll table this then, please. Next item on the agenda is street pavement markings.
So you're well aware, there are state streets, state routes that the DOT maintains in Nashville, and then all others the town maintains, and some of the streets that the town has maintained, does maintain, like North Clarendon Drive, Birchwood Drive, Parks Club Drive, Cross Street, Virginia, have pavement markings on them. It's been a number of years, by the looks of them, since the town's last painted them. I have received requests from citizens for the town to do that. I know from past experience, the most cost-effective way to do that for a small town is to jump on a contract with the state and use their bulk buying power to get cheaper. So I've reached out to Mark with the North Carolina DOT, he's the Assistant Division Traffic Engineer for our area, and he put together, based on the state contracts that they currently have in place right now, for striping what it would cost the town to have these streets pavement markings upgraded. Now, they don't use just regular traffic paint anymore, because they found it just doesn't wear well. They've gone to a different product, which is a little pricier, but he said the life is much, much greater out of it. So we're looking at maintaining the cost of maintaining the striping on our five streets right around $15,000. Now, I could find no requirement in North Carolina state statute that requires the town to continue to paint markings, centerline, edge of pavement on streets that aren't highways, so to speak. So it's very possible that if the town council didn't want to incur this cost anymore, we don't do it anymore, and we just let what's there fade out to the point where you don't see it anymore. So that's the question I have for the council this evening. Do you want to continue to put pavement markings on these streets? And when you look at them, you might have questions, why Birchwood Drive from First Street or Highway 58 to Golfers Lane, no markings? You get just past Golfers Lane, all the way around the old golf course, there's centerline painted on there. Why they didn't do the first block, I don't know, but, you know, this proposal does call, if we do it, this cost does include painting that first block.
Randy, I've got two questions. How many of these streets have we already slurry paved already? If any?
None of them.
We have not slurry paved?
No. Now, a number of these are on what Lee and I want to get done for the FY '22, and we wouldn't mark them and then cover them up.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
We would wait.
Okay, we would wait. So how many of these, how many of these streets are on year '22 to be slurry paved? All of them?
Well, not necessarily all of them, but if you've paid attention to the condition of North Clarendon, we need to do something with that, or, you know, we're going to end up having to overlay it with asphalt. We do have a company that, two years ago, came in and did a very successful slurry seal coming to take a look and give us advice. They have two different pavement treatment options before you get to the mill and overlay with asphalt. One's a slurry seal, and another one is a seal coat. A slurry seal is what we did on Cross Street this calendar year. It seals up the cracks and puts a rejuvenated surface on it. It doesn't, you know, best-case scenario, you get about five more years of life out of five to seven. A slurry seal, you get probably seven to 12, depending on traffic. If you do an asphalt overlay, hopefully, you get 20 years out of it. But, you know, each progressive pavement treatment costs considerably more money. The slurry seal and the seal coat are very cost-effective, and we can make our town money go pretty far with that. We don't do but a few blocks with a two-inch asphalt overlay for $170,000. It just doesn't stretch that well.
I don't think it makes sense to spend $15,000 to strike the street, and then we're going to slurry over it next year, so I would not go along with that.
Right.
But I do think we need to at least put centerlines down, because a lot of people, a lot of people think they can drive in the middle of the highway. So the centerline would give us some leverage just to eliminate, hopefully eliminate any head-on collisions.
I would like to see this incorporated into our budget process as we're going into the 2021, '22 budget, rather than us consider tonight what we want to do with it.
Can we make that a motion, please?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Would that come out of Powell bill money?
Yes, it can, it can, but, you know, just a note for the council, you know, the number of streets we need to address, the Powell bill money is a fraction of what's...
Our next item on the agenda is Nashville Junction proposal.
So the town of Nashville has received a proposal from Michael Hurt, who's a developer, who is in the process of buying the Nashville Building Supply property, and... I had it up on the screen here earlier. I guess I'll have to log in. I'm sorry about that. That property, you have in your packet the plan for it. The plan, if you can visualize, you have the old, 105-year-old, 20,000-square-foot store itself. You have the outside storage sheds to the east of it, and then to the north is the open storage yard that went with the lumberyard. On the east side of Barn Street, there's just shy of three acres that go with that, which years ago, they used to do all kinds of stuff there. You know, they cured lumber, they milled lumber, they made windows and doors, moldings. In its heyday, you know, the operation was quite impressive. Today, most of that structures on the west side of Barn Street are in need of attention. What Mr. Hurt's proposal is, that he's already started in motions somewhat, the three acres on the west side of Barn Street, once he's had that rezoned, so he could do office and institutional zoning on that, so he could have potentially a combination of office and institutional uses plus housing. On the proposal, you will see he has there shown three apartment buildings, three stories, 24 units each for 72 apartments. On the east side of Barn Street, he has the idea of spending 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars rehabbing the old 105-year-old building, and putting in it, I don't know if I included the interior layout idea for that or not in the packet, but dividing that up into 12 suites with a large alley or hallway down the middle, and make that available for restaurants, professional services, for other retailers. Now, being that it's still somewhat of a downtown setting, there is no parking necessarily. So what he wants to do is, under his proposal, is partner with the town of Nashville, see if the town of Nashville, in exchange for the nearly $7, $8 million investment on the west side of Barn Street with the new apartment buildings, and the $1.5 million investment in rehabbing and keeping that historical building, see if the town would partner with him and build a public parking lot on the north part of what's on the east side of Barn Street. And also in that proposal is the idea of upfitting one of those outside sheds, or T-sheds, as he calls them, for a farmer's market venue, and then incorporating a small stage or amphitheater that would draw additional people to the farmer's market, draw additional people to the tenants that are going to be in the 20,000-square-foot building, and really boost that into town as far as a place to be and do things. I have heard many, many glowing comments and reviews of this proposal. I think the mayor's received some of those to tonight to read. We do have Mr. Hurt with here us tonight. He's scheduled to close on the property soon, and he's back to the council seeking, you know, the town's commitment to partnering with him on this public-private partnership in developing the Nashville Junction proposal. Michael, do you have anything you'd like to talk to the council or explain at this point? One thing, maybe before Michael takes, the idea of the farmer's market would be run by the Nashville Parks and Rec. We're looking, since Rocky Mount has theirs on Saturday mornings, where we would have ours on Friday evening and maybe Saturday afternoons. The stage idea was an idea that would boost attendance for the farmer's market, so we would have, we would have entertainment on the stage or in the amphitheater on Friday afternoons after 5:00 that go to 9:00 or 10:00 at the latest, to add atmosphere, give people another reason to come to the junction, to patronize the farmer's market venues, to also patronize the business establishments that are going to be in the Nashville Junction building itself, while still having a large green area and public parking where everybody can fit in. The intent is not to have concerts there, like you have with Blooming Fest, that go to midnight or maybe the wee hours of the morning. It's low-key recreation. It's not, there's no intent to have a Super Bowl halftime show there. It would all be packed up and over with by 10:00 PM. And again, the activities on that stage would be primarily with Park and Rec. You know, Michael Hurt would like to reserve the opportunity to maybe use it from time to time, to put on his own event at the junction for the community. That's the proposal. That, that's the proposal.
How late, how late are we anticipating having the farmer's market to be open? On a Friday or, or Saturday night?
Well, if the vendors come, say, one o'clock to five o'clock, and if, you know, they, at the, at that point, they could choose to close up. But if most of the people are, if, if a lot of people are coming to the junction for the recreation we have on the stage or the amphitheater, they'll likely stay as, as long as they're selling stuff. Coy, do you, did, did you have a set hour of operation for the farmer's market in the proposal that you put together?
Um, when we had looked at that and the, the budget I put together was based off of being open four to eight on Friday afternoons. That way you could get, uh, open once people were off of work on Friday afternoon.
So the, the, the cost, you know, preliminarily, I, I've been working with Kevin Varnell with Stocks Engineering. And just the, the construction cost of the parking lot was projected at 250,000. And I, I also showed Kevin some of those amphitheater pictures, uh, and pointed out the one that, uh, received a lot of favorable response. So he put in a, you know, preliminarily, a cost of 50,000 for a total of 350. Since then, he's had an opportunity to really put the pencil to it. And I have these here this evening. I didn't get these in time to put them in the packet, so, um, going to hand them out here tonight and order for your review. I will tell you, in this proposal, there, in this cost estimate, there are naturally contingencies, uh, design engineering, construction engineering, that those original numbers didn't necessarily take into account. We weren't anticipating until Kevin really got into it. Because we'll be disturbing more than an acre, building that parking lot and stage area. We'll have to do onsite stormwater retention, which isn't a bad thing because we, there, there are some known drainage problems at the corner of Railroad and, and North Body now, where all this property drains. With the, the contingencies, um, Kevin comes up with a cost estimate of 572,000 dollars. Now, if you take the stage out of it, which is 169,000, and the contingency, it, it brings it down to, to about 350,000 dollars.
That number ballooned.
It did balloon.
It blew up.
Michael, if, if you, if you want to address the council on this? I mean, I, I have to tell you, the overwhelming response that I have received from people of Nashville about this idea, you know, granted, it was before we had this cost estimate. What a fantastic idea. This is just what our town needs to be able to have some more amenities for, for young professionals and young families. Something to do. And it would be a real boost to that end of Barn Street. It, it would only, it would only amplify and help the downtown area and add so much to our community.
I wish we'd gotten these figures earlier.
Michael? And then we'll hear from the people. Any questions or concerns?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I mean Randy kind of articulated the, the, you know, the project as a whole very well. Um, I know him and staff have worked on it, um, as has ourselves and the professionals that we've hired to, to, uh, lay this out and design it. Um, we talk about economic growth and development, and this is exactly what this is. It's going to create jobs, it's going to create employment, it's going to create a tax revenue and a steady stream of water and sewer utility fees for this community. Um, collectively, we're anticipating this project to bring somewhere between 12 and a half to 13 million dollars in value. That's through an income approach. You know, I, I've talked about a public-private partnership from the beginning. Met with council members and had some great ideas on how we could re, restore this historical landmark in the community. Um, we've already made provisions to get it on the historical registry. We've actually, we're going to be submitting that paperwork come June. And we're confident that it will be one of the few historical, uh, properties, you know, credited on the federal and state, uh, registry in Nashville. You know, it's a beautiful structure. Uh, I think we've got a great idea. And, you know, we've, we've worked very hard and very diligently on this. And, you know, Randy did have talks with Stocks prior to this. And the general consensus was this was going to be somewhere between that 250 and 350,000 dollars. But if you look at what the projections of the, the build-out is going to look like, you know, 12 and a half, 13 million dollars, I think that's, that's a modest investment. And you look at how it's going to improve everything around that property. And, uh, you know, we've, we've worked hard, we've worked diligently, we've done what we said we were going to do. And, um, I know that we've got some people here that support what we're trying to do. I do think that this is a package deal. The stage, the parking lot, and the farmer's market. When I've talked to the businesses in the community that's expressed interest and are ready to sign a pre-lease agreement a year out, this is what we're proposing to them. We're proposing the, the, the stage, we're proposing the public parking lot, we're proposing the 20, the 72 luxury apartments across the street. And, um, you know, they're, they're bought in on it. We have six businesses right now that are prepared to sign that pre-lease agreement a year out. I'm telling them all it's 12 months before it's ready. I actually spoke with, uh, the hen and the hog today that's out of Halifax. And they want to do some kind of a catering event where we have kind of like a wedding reception venue, possibly 25 to 3,000 square feet. And then that way, you can bring that restaurant in Halifax that's kind of secluded in a, in a hole in historic Halifax here to Nashville. And that's a really nice restaurant. Um, that's the kind of environment that we're looking to try to create here. Um, I've had other people that's approached us that talked about putting clubs and things like that in it. That's not our MO. Uh, we want to have a family environment where you can bring your kids, get something to eat, enjoy yourself, and, and also have a place for young professionals to live across the street, where they can have quick and easy access to 64, uh, whether it be working in Rocky Mount or Raleigh. And so, um, I realize there's going to be opposition. Look, anytime you do something like this in a community, there's going to be pushback. But, you know... You know, it, this is going to be an asset for the community. And, um, you know, having a farmer's market right there, one of the big things I heard about South Atlanta is in these low-income communities, you have people that have a hard time having access to these farmer's markets, the fresh foods and vegetables. And, you know, that's going to have an impact in the community, you know, for the whole town of Nashville. Everybody can gravitate and walk towards that area. There're sidewalks all over the place, it's perfect. Um, so, you know, I, I do think the pros outweigh the cons. We're excited about the opportunity. Um, I hope to have your support. And, uh, you know, if y'all have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Michael, I just have one thing I'd like to talk with you about. And I think it's the amphitheater and stage. It's, it's believed that that's going to be loud music all the time. And it was my understanding when you talked with it, it was going to be something like down at the Mills. Just little, maybe I would come with my little person and do music?
Mm-hmm.
What is that really going to be about?
Well, I mean, that's, that's the environment that we want. I mean, we don't want a rock concert or, or a big, you know, light show or anything like that. We just want a, uh, an environment, again, that you could bring your family to and drive home safe. And, you, you know, I, I, to be honest with you, I don't have, and, I don't have a theater or a stage. But I do know that with the town's oversight, that they'll be held to the public standards. And so if there is an issue or something that's going on where things start getting off track, you know, ultimately, the town will be able to depict and control what happens there. And so I do think that's important, having the town involved with that aspect. So that you don't have a rogue entity that comes in and kind of does whatever they want to. People are still holding the community accountable. And so I think that's a good thing. But I mean, it's not just, you know, you might have a bluegrass band come and play. You might have church service on Sunday. I mean, you might have, you know, a poetry night or, or some type of opera or, you know, some type of a community event where the Girl Scouts put on a show or something. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that, um, you know, I, I, I've, I've referenced worldly gig a lot. And I'll be honest with you, I've, I've been there, I've seen it. I've never been to a worldly gig show, but, you know, my mentality of what we want to have there, again, is something that's going to be family-based, that's going to be an asset to the community and not something that's going to... I, I think, I think a lot of times that we, we, uh, we all have a tendency of making things out worse than they really are. You know, it's like, most problems that we think of, it's, it's, it's so much worse than it actually winds up becoming when it actually comes to fruition. You know, a lot of the stuff I worry about on a day-to-day basis, whether it be, you know, panicking before talking to council or anybody else, you know, really, when it's all said and done, it's not really that bad. And, um, I know there's some concerns, but, you know, I mean, again, the, the, the town's going to be held accountable for it.
I just wanted to hear your think, thinking on that.
I hope I've articulated it.
You say, you, you say you're promoting this as a, as a package deal. So making that statement, are you saying that you can, you, you're not going to be able to go forward with, with eliminating a farmer's market or a stage or whatever? It's got to be all or nothing?
I, I mean, I certainly don't want it to, to be like that. But these are things that I've talked to these tenants about, you know, when I've got these, these businesses that's going to create jobs, that's going to, you know, renovate these office shelves that we're providing them. And we, we're telling them, hey, look, this is what we're proposing to the town. This is what we're looking to try to achieve here. I mean, that, that carries a lot of weight when you've got a West Ridge Grill that's contemplating coming to town. Or when you got a Round the Bakery, or Laurel Woods that's got the coffee shop at the corner who wants to put a wine and beer place here. You know, the wine and beer shop that's going to open there is going to have a direct impact based off of the stage. You know, I mean, that's one of the reasons for having it. And again, we're, we're promoting the Rocky Mount Mills community here, kind of the same aesthetics, feel and vibe that we've got. And so, you know, again, I mean, I think Randy, uh, somebody misquoted them. He's never said that they were going to be up until two in the morning. It's always been somewhere around nine or 10 o'clock. And I mean, I, I don't think that's, that meets...
They're in the Nashville...
That, that, well, they might have misquoted them too.
Well, I think the Nashville graphic states that nothing we have here is going to go on until one or two o'clock in the morning. I believe that's what the Nashville graphic states.
Right. So, I mean, that's, and y'all have no more ordinances to shut that down anyway. So I mean, there's things that are put into play. And if they haven't been put into play, then we can make those changes to those ordinances to make them more accommodating to what some of the concerns are. I mean, that's, through my experiences working with different municipalities.
I think for me, the vast majority of people that I've spoken with are for this project. And I think they realize when looking at our population, you know, we have a pretty stagnant population, um, altogether. And then when we look at the 40 and below, it's actually declining. And I think everyone can agree, especially doing the steering committee and, and doing our comprehensive plan, that something has to be done in Nashville to make it more of a, a destination for young professionals and for young families. Now, I know we have heard concerns about the stage. So that is one of the things that we were thinking, could we possibly do in the beginning, temporary stage, um, for when we wanted to hold those events that would cost, say, 500 or 600 dollars plus whatever it is to, um, put the stage up, just so that people can see what this truly is going to look like and get on board and, and gain whatever community support might have been lost just for the stage component before a permanent structure goes up.
I mean, I think we could entertain something like that, yeah.
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, I want to work with you, I don't want to work against you.
Perfect.
Is the stage going to make or break this?
I think it's going to have an impact on the businesses that are going to want to be in that facility. Yes, ma'am, I do.
But I think once you have a temporary stage up and we can see that this is just very light music, that it's family-friendly, that it's nothing, you know, offensive, um, and it's not going to be causing any problems, I think then, you know, we can revisit the permanent stage at that point.
If you had somebody up there playing on a guitar, okay? I mean, that's, that's a big difference than having, you know, a big band come out there with speakers taller than I and bumping music out.
Right.
You know, with, you know, just whatever it is. I mean, I, it, it can all be controlled and managed to be able to, to fit with some harmony. And, and it doesn't have to be this overbearing, you know, Walnut Creek-type situation where you've got, where you're echoing the whole town.
Right. And I think everyone needs to realize that the, the stage or amphitheater is really looking like a, a covered picnic area. You could call it a pavilion. It's, it's not going to be this huge...
Right. I mean, even, even in, in Wilson, if you look at their concept, they've got a concrete pad. They don't even have walls up or a roof on it for that matter, but it's not a large area. Now, the greenery area is really nice. And I think that is going to be something that's important that, that should be considered. Because if you've got people out there sitting with their kids around and watching and hanging out, I think the better, the more of an investment that goes into those streetscapes and that area is going to really, you know, gravitate people to that area that want to go and hang out. I would encourage you to go to Wilson and, and look at what they've done there. It's very impressive.
I think that the town has really got to get on board with some of these things. I mean, we're being outpaced by smaller communities when you've got, uh, Bailey holding a downtown street party. Um, Spring Hope has their Showside Grill. Tarboro has these events on the commons. And of course, then there's the Mills in Rocky Mount. And what do people come to do in Nashville? So I am in favor of the project, Michael. Um, I, I will tell you that the cost numbers tonight were a little bit surprising, getting these at the meeting. Um, that, that is a little bit of a concern and we might need to...
I think we can sharpen the pencil and...
Did this include the farmer's market?
I haven't seen that.
I didn't see any farmer's market on this. And that was 85,000, so I add that to it. I mean, and I, we need to see some figures of our cost.
The proposal, as Michael has put it forth for the farmer's market is, he would incur the cost of upfitting the building, and then we would pay him a monthly rent. So if you had a chance to look at the budget that Coy put together for the first and second year of the farmer's market, those upfront costs are, Michael, under this proposal.
Now, the rent, I think, was 1,200 and 1,700 for year one and year two?
It's, it's, it's really dependent upon, you know, what Randy and Coy and the community wants there. You know, if we, if we, if we're going to tear down a building and build a brand-new metal building structure with roll-down doors, concrete slab, electrical, I mean, those costs are, are going to go up.
Right.
If we renovate what we have there currently, those costs are going to be relatively minimal. And then, and, you know, the rent kind of justifies that. And that's what I was...
Okay.
You know, that's, and so we, we, we got an idea of what we're thinking that it's going to cost. I, I hadn't seen what your, your budget's there, but, um, you know, based off of between, you know, we're anticipating it to be anywhere between 100,000 to 200,000 because we're looking at a metal building now. So that does change the dynamic some. But again, I think there's other things that could be done, maybe to help sharpen that pencil.
Mm-hmm.
I do. Uh, utilize kind of some things that's there, but, you know, I would leave that to councils.
Randy, I'm looking at a figure. You had farmer's market, 85,000.
So at the last council meeting, the, the council approved a resolution to submit a community project fund application to Congressman Butterfield. He has the ability, as congressman members do now, from what I understand with the American Recovery Act, to put in earmarks. Those, those are federal appropriations for pet projects within their districts. We submitted, on Monday, I submitted an application for 80% of the cost of the fire station, which was, uh, 1.4 million, for 80% of the 250,000 dollar projected cost of the parking lot at that time, and, and 20% of the 50,000 dollar stage. And to see if we could get, grant money for upfitting the building ourselves for the farmer's market. If Michael would just simply, you know, again, here, here's a low, low rent lease on the farmer's market facilities, but you upfit the buildings. So I put 85,000 dollars in that cost estimate. That's where that came from.
So this, this, uh, for the farmer's market, this rental agreement or rental lease is for a 12-month period? Because we're not going to have farmer's markets 12 months a year.
Well, that's why the rent was lower in the first year, because, you know, it's going to take some time to upfit that. We're not going to have a full-fledged farmer's market, uh, by July 1st. What Coy's proposing is we have some, as they're called, pop-up events. September, October, November. And then during the, the winter months, um, we continue to work with Michael to upfit the facilities. And then come April, we have a full-fledged farmer's market with hopefully 15 to 16 vendors that are there weekly throughout the farmer's market season.
And the other day, I got, I got the handout from the downtown steering committee, and they were talking about a farmer's market in the west side parking lot of the courthouse.
That was one of the suggestions from, I think, Withers, Revanall.
Are we bumping heads against each other here? Are we bumping heads against each other here? We don't need to?
No.
No. They're suggesting a farmer's market somewhere, and since that's, like, the only potential spot for it, if we don't have this, they were suggesting that.
So, Sarah did call Congressman Butterfield's office today. As of Friday, our application was one of 20. The application deadline was yesterday at 5:00. They didn't have numbers on the total number of applications for the first congressional district of North Carolina. They're going to be reviewing those projects, and with, it sounded like within four to five weeks, make some announcements on which ones they're going to put forth into the federal appropriation bill for funding.
Thank you. These are the figures you used for that application?
They are, yes.
Okay, so they are much below these figures.
I didn't, I didn't have these figures at the time I had to put that application in.
What's in there for the, what's in there for the parking lot?
$250,000.
$250,000.
$50,000 for the stage, and $85,000 for upfitting the farmer's market building.
$385,000.
And then, $1.4 million for Fire Station 2.
A million, 785,000.
Thank you, Michael.
Maybe one, one final thing to add. You know, Michael alluded to the private investment that is going to be done under this proposed project with the luxury apartments, with redoing the 20,000-square-foot building of, of the Nashville Exchange. All that private investment, if we, if it has a taxable value of what it costs to build it all, it's going to bring in about $58,000 of additional property taxes for the town, about $50,000 more in water and sewer fees, approximately $5,000 more in stormwater, and conservatively, another $30,000 in sales tax a year.
You said Nashville Exchange, but you meant Nashville Building Supply, right?
Yeah, Nashville Building Supply, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you, Michael. And now, we'll hear from the public comments, and the first person is Mary John Matthews. Please come and state your name, your address, and Sarah, with your time for the three minutes.
Ray, Ray, did you put that back on strong? Is there a reason we don't add it up there?
It won't lie.
If time's out, come to me.
Good evening. My name is Mary John Matthews. I live at 205 West Cross Street in Nashville. I have lived there for the last 35 years, and I've lived in Nashville the majority of my life, which I'll soon be turning 80, so that's been a long time. And I agree mostly with what Mr. Hertz said, but I don't want my comments to look like it's a pushback. Firstly, make it be known that I'm not against growth here in Nashville, and the project sounds like a wonderful idea. I just look forward to seeing the Nashville Building Supply being renovated. It just, and, and the apartments going up over there, that's just such a, a need in Nashville for housing. I know about it, because I work part-time at a local real estate office, and people would come in from all areas looking someplace to live in Nashville. So, I know that is a need. I'm kind of still out on the limb about a parking lot, and Mr. Randy gave some new figures tonight. My, my figures I got from the agenda report that we printed from the website this morning, so if I misstate anything, it's because of what we got earlier and not what's been handed out tonight. But I'm a little bit out on the limb about the parking lot at a cost of $250,000 to the taxpayers of Nashville. And also, the farmer's market to be leased, the report this morning said $1,700 a month, which I don't know of many properties in Nashville that rent for $1,700 a month. So, that seems like an awful lot of lease rent to me. And my main concern is the stage amphitheater, which costs $50,000, which is planned to be at approximately 150 feet from my bedroom window. And I realized that the town has submitted a request from Congress Butterfield's fund to cover 80% of this cost. Even then, the town will have to pay $60,000 if they pay their 20%. Granted, that we get that money from Mr. Butterfield's project. So, it just looks like to me, either way, it's costing the taxpayers for a project that appears, looks like poor business still for me. It looks to me like the town of Nashville losing out, Mr. Hertz gaining. That's just my take on the situation. And if you would just look at it, let's say $1,700 a month, that's over $20,000 a year that we'd be paying him in rent. And if he would lease it, if we would lease it to him for 20 or 25 years, that's over $500,000. This is, I just think it's poor business for us to do, to look at that. And the farmer's market, we're talking about a seasonal thing, it's not a year-round thing, and we're talking about approximately a half a day, maybe two days a week, and yet, we want to rent him that farmer's market for $1,700 a month? It just doesn't quite add up to me. But my main concern tonight is the amph... Oh, man, I'm going to, my lights go out.
Randy, she needs the lights.
She needs the lights.
She needs the lights.
The main, my main, my main concern, they were just some things I would like for you to look at as I address them. But my main concern is that stage and amphitheater. Now, I look at a stage and an amphitheater, it's something that's built up, and the people stand up on it. Now, Mr. Lance and Kindledit look like it would be something else. But when I look at a stage and an amphitheater, I look at something that's where it's going, the music's going to be projected. And so, I would like y'all to please consider the noise that such an amphitheater would create, and also to consider the safety of me and my neighbor next door, of the extra traffic that would be coming in and out. We both live alone, and also the trash overflow. You know, people like the litter. So, that would just be falling over, over into my yard. And, and now, it's so difficult for me to get out in and out of my driveway. And so, with all this extra parking and traffic, I just wonder if the town has looked at any way to, to accommodate this extra traffic. I mean, I can hardly get out of my street, out of my driveway in the mornings to go someplace. I got to look this way and look that way, especially since Nashville, that Nashville bypass, it's really created a lot of extra traffic. And Mr. Hertz told us that he would plant some shrubs to act as a sound barrier. But, you know, it takes several years for those shrubs to grow up enough to be a sound barrier. So, I would just suggest maybe a six-foot brick or concrete wall to act as a sound barrier if he, if the town insists on a stage amphitheater.
Mayor John, your three minutes are up, honey.
Okay. Well, I tie myself at home, and it...
You should have talked a little longer.
I would just ask each of you to please look and search your heart and ask if you would like for a stage or amphitheater be at your back door, 150-plus feet. And I know it may start out as a small thing, but as Barney Fife says, we got to nip this thing in the bud. I cannot wait till it gets to the blossoms and blooms and to something more than that. I suggest a patio, a concrete patio with umbrellas and, and tables, and like he said, have a musician play a music, keep it ground level and not stage amphitheater.
Thank you. The next person is Beth Matthews.
Could you pull the screen up so it shows where my mom's property's at, please? My name is Beth Matthews, and I live at 601 Santa Bell Drive here in Nashville. And I have a lot of the same concerns that my mom does, of course, but, you know, we talk about all these different projects that are coming up in this area, and I can remember the first time that we had a conversation, a private conversation with Mr. Hertz, and it was talking about these apartments that were going over there. And at first, there were some numbers that were coming out, and it was talking about monthly rent in terms of saying $1,100 to $1,300. Then, not last meeting, but the time before, then it went down to where it was like $1,000 a month, and then last week, it was 900 or 950. So, what kind of apartments are we talking about, and what kind of people are we getting to go over there? So, and then what happens if you go and you build all this other stuff, but then you don't have anybody that's over there to substantiate, to pay that amount of rent? So, then what type of apartments are going into that area? So, it's, all of this is built upon one another. Whether you're talking about the Body Street, extend, you know, part of that street closing down, what's going on downtown, what you're projecting to do out at the end of, you know, this area, it's all connected. And I don't feel like that there's been enough planning and that there's been enough done to say, this is exactly what we want to see proposed. And can I walk over to this? Oops. So, right here, you're talking about the stage, and right here, you're talking about my mom's back door. That's unacceptable. And I think my mom hit it right on the head when she said to search your hearts about what you wanted to be done at your back door, or at your mother's back door, or somebody in your community that you've been to church with, and you've so-called been friends with. And it, I feel like there's been some things that have been going on behind the tables, and it doesn't astonish me that you didn't see the numbers before tonight. And I find that to be absolutely amazing. And this, I started coming to this meeting based upon how it affected my mother. But now I'm seeing it needs to affect everybody in this town as a citizen, because this is how our money is being spent, and I do not think it's right.
Edith Gupton?
My name is Edith Gupton. I live 201 West Cross Street, next door to Mayor John. My main concern is the amphitheater. The rest of it, I think, will help Nashville. It looks good. It's clean, as long as it's clean. But I do think it will cause more traffic. But what can you say? I was amazed when I looked at this. I was speechless. But we talked with Mr. Hertz, and we talked to him about moving the amphitheater from back there to up to the front, where he planned to put the farmer's market and move the farmer's market back. And he said he'd see what he could do about that. And I think that Mayor John and I both, if it's going to be there, I think if that amphitheater was moved, because back there, it's fine. There's nothing on the other side of it.
... Now, that's where I stand. And we try to keep our property clean. We are good citizens of Nashville, Nashcan, and we try to pay our bills. Don't have to worry about us paying our water bills, any of that stuff. None of the men have to go up there and edge our streets. So, we save the town a lot of money in that way, too, when we try to keep our property looking appropriate and nice when people drive by. We don't want them to see trash. And I will agree, there's a lot of trash up there right now behind, we have a garden that joins, near where the amphitheater is going to be, joins our property. And it is a lot of trash up there. But that's where I stand on it.
Thank you so much, Edith. Is this Leroy Jones?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Leroy Jones, 210 South Body Street, and I'm here in behalf of Mary John Matthews. And I agree everything she says, and I'll back her up.
Thank you. Very much. It's, is this Kenneth Maury?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to make it very brief. I'm opposed to the amphitheater.
I don't know how I feel about the parking lot. The farmer's market is something that is only, what, three or four months a year, very brief. That's a big expenditure for that. I can simply say I am for development. Another thing, I think, that amphitheater and music stay... Value, all the new development, I understand that. But to the individual who owns a little house, of which I've lived there for 52 years, something like that, you're going to see some values decrease in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth. The next person is Tim Matthews. State your name and your address, Ken.
Tim Matthews, 205 West Cross Street. Number one, sounds like we've got a sewer and water problem in this town. Last couple of weekends, that's been a big issue. We're here tonight starting to talk about this junction. But all the money we're going to dump into that, and you've got all these sewer problems. I think you need to think about where this money's being spent at. $1,700 a month for a building that's used a half a day a week, for possibly two or three months a year, to pay $1,700 a month. There's restaurants that open all the time, don't pay that kind of money. It's a bad business deal. You really need to think about it. It's, it's just too far-fetched. It just, it just don't make no sense. The next thing, nobody ever answered how long it was going to be leased for. So, with $1,700 a month, we don't know how long. That was never answered. I think you asked that, Larry. Nobody ever confirmed that, I don't know if they're scared to tell them or what.
To enhance the music for people to go listen at music. Do you know what happens after people start drinking and listening to music? Trash, cussing, throwing things in my mom's yard. It's uncalled for. There's a whole lot of things to think about here. I've got so much to say about it, I don't even know where to start. I mean, really, it's, it's unbelievable. The money needs to be spent somewhere else. We've tried to talk to Randy, we've tried to talk to Mr. Hertz, we've gotten nowhere. But I don't, I don't intend to stop on this, and that's a promise to the council. I will not give up. So, just take it in your hearts, her and Edith, because we're not going to quit. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person's Elaine Robertson.
Elaine Robertson, 509 Park Court in Nashville since 1960. And on behalf of Mary John and Edith, it's my professional opinion that property values would be maintained better if the pavilion were relocated further from their homes. The, the first concern, of course, in buying a home is location, location, location. It's a good market now. It's a good buyer's market, a good seller's market. But it would be, I think, there would be less effect to their property values if the pavilion were relocated. Otherwise, the project sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, that's the last person that signed up to speak. I have three that were sent to us that I'd like to read. And the first one is, my name is Brian Murphy, long-term resident of Nashville, North Carolina. I live on Westwood Circle. I strongly oppose the development suggested at the intersection of Weston Avenue and Barnes Street. An amphitheater in this area would bring a lot of noise pollution to the surrounding neighborhoods. We have a 13-month-old child, and this would be destructive for her ability to sleep. I appreciate you taking my comments into consideration. And that was from Brian Murphy. This one says, I wanted to express my full support for the junction and the rest...
Who was this from? What?
Who was this?
This is Bill Lom. I wanted to express my full support for the junction and the restoration of the buildings in and around the old Nashville... I wanted to express my full support for the junction and the restoration of the buildings in and around the old Nashville Building Supply. As a homeowner, resident of this great town, owner of a local real estate company, and a member of the Nashville Planning Board, I'm excited to see that area being brought back to life. The Nashville Building Supply has a long history in this town and as, as things change, it is nice to have new life come from our history. As a realtor, I believe the more we have to offer and do in Nashville, the better our town looks to those choosing to stay and those choosing to move into our great town. I believe doing projects like this keeps the charm of our town offer, town, offers and enhances that charm even more. I look forward to walking to the junction with my grandchildren for a time of music, shopping and conversation. Although I do believe a better name for the project would be the, the lumberyard. And this is from Trey Brazel. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts about the project that Michael Hurt is proposing in regards to the Nashville Building Supply. First, let me say if I were a developer, I would do it myself. It's a great idea on paper. That building is a perfect location for something like this and the perfect canvas to be restored and solidified into Nashville's future. Having a facility like this could attract some great new businesses to town. I would love to see it buzzing with people stopping off on the way home from work to fellowship over hot or cold refreshment, or bringing their family in on Saturdays to pick up local produce and eggs, then having lunch at a great, at a great new restaurant inside. We need to make investments carefully and intentionally for the future. A church with no children is a dying church, and a town with no young families is a dying town. Nashville is safe, it's beautiful, and it's in such a great location. If this is done right and the town mandates Mr. Hurt to meet certain design expectations, this will be a wonderful and beautiful, wonderful and beautiful. The devil's in the details and I have some concern there. I don't believe the town should spend such a significant amount of money on the parking lot unless the land is given to the town or the town has a dollar lease into perpetuity and I am okay with the town helping out as this does provide a benefit for the town. But not without a very good agreement in place. I know very little about the details of this project, so I will have to plead ignorance. Thank you for listening and considering the ideas of those who live and work and invest in Nashville every day. I am only one person who is no more or less valuable than the other, any other person in this town, but I love this idea that Mr. Hurt is proposing. And that was Trey Brazel.
And what is his address?
His address is, it's not on here.
Fifty-eight North.
It's an email.
Fifty-eight North, Highway 58 North.
He lives out of town.
Yeah.
And works inside of town and owns Brazel Milling Company, yes. Brazel Fumy Farms now, sorry.
Pardon? Um, if you'd come up to the mic and--
My name is Al Hyde and I live at 117 West Washington Street. I do live in a home that's on the National Register of Historic Places. I am very familiar with how that process works. You have to go through the Department of the Interior to get it listed. It is not just a quick thing. It's a lot involved. There are tax credits that are incentives, such as when I did mine 40%, which was great, you know, for our home. But I agree with Trey. The town of Nashville should not be shouldering this burden on, on our shoulders and our taxes. So I'm not in favor of such an astronomical price as what I heard tonight for a parking lot. Nor am I in favor of paying seventeen hundred dollars a month to someone for a farmer's market that is only used just two or three months out of the year. There was a mention of what brings people to Nashville. And that, you know, Bailey has the Showside Grill. Well, I would hardly compare the Showside Grill that you mentioned to this kind of project. It is a hole in the wall. It is fine, but it is a restaurant. We're talking about something far more significant and something that was done with private equity in Bailey versus public equity in Nashville. They are not the same. In addition, Nashville is the county seat for Nash County, but we are our own entity and we should feel no obligation to the county whatsoever. We have given, and we have given, and we have given. And some of you sitting up here worked for the county. And I think it's very important that you realize at this time--
Now, it has to stay about our project we're doing now. Discussing that.
But in other words--
Not about the county or us. It's about what we're doing right now, Al.
Okay, so I have stated the case.
And I, I did want to tell you, Al, that when he put it in the parking lot, he said, I don't believe the town should spend such a significant amount of money on the parking lot unless, you know, we pay that dollar for a longer period of time.
Yes, in perpetuity.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You know, about the parking lot, it says, I don't believe the town should spend such a significant amount of money on the parking lot unless the land is given to the town or the town has a dollar lease for a long period of time.
So that's the big if, isn't it? If it's given to the town.
Or if we have a very long-term lease.
Long-term lease. Of a dollar.
Randy, at one time, I heard a dollar lease for the farmer's market. Did I dream that up?
I, I don't believe in the lease. There was ever, from the beginning of this proposal, that the farmer's market would be leased for a dollar. The parking lot area and the stage would be for a dollar, but the town would have to do the improvements. The, the proposal, since it was proposed to the town, was I will outfit one of the buildings or all three of the buildings and lease them back to the town, and I will take care of the outfit cost, but there will be a monthly rental.
Can Coy come up here and speak as to just how many months the farmer's market would operate and then what your plans are for the remainder of the year?
So it, it's my understanding that a normal, um, season for a farmer's market normally runs from the beginning to, of April to October, uh, with some holiday markets in there as well around Thanksgiving and Christmas. So that would be the plan for our season there at the farmer's market. Uh, in the off-season, there's an opportunity for us to use that space for other events, um, such as our archery program. It gives us an indoor space to do that. Um, there's, I'm sure there'd be an opportunity to, to lease that facility, uh, maybe for some type of event as well to kind of offset that cost of that rental as well.
And you talked about pop-up markets for, um, the beginning of this? Is that something that could exist for the, the remainder of the year as well, after that October mark until April?
Well, and that would be, you know, the, those holiday markets would be essentially the same thing as the pop-up markets. Kind of what we were talking about for the, um, 2021 season, since we are already behind the ball to, to get a full season again. We would do, um, pop-up markets in maybe August, September, October, um, once a month for those, for the fall of this year.
Anybody ask any questions?
We're not going to do anything this month, this year because it's not going to be developed.
It doesn't have to be there, though, the pop-up markets.
Yeah, but the area needs to be cleaned up.
But you're looking at a budget of about $64,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be in the parks and recreation budget.
Um, I believe we'd be, it would be in parks and recreation, but we would keep it separate, correct?
It's in, it would be its own separate department. It would be separate from parks and recreation.
And as far as the lease, I think the term that we were looking at in here, it was two years, correct? For the farmer's market?
Correct.
You're not letting it tie in a long-term?
Right, to make sure that this is a success, to make sure that this is something that works for the town, to make sure that this is bringing in the clientele.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments for Cory?
No, my next question is for Michael.
Michael.
So if this doesn't come to fruition, Michael, what will happen to that building?
That's a good question. I don't know. I've been contacted by people who want to buy the teasheds on the back of the property that own the supply house next door. Um, you know, you know, I, I could easily see it turned into something else, that, you know, leasing it to somebody else. I mean, that's a pretty big acquisition that we've got going on here. And, um, you know, I could sell it. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we could do. You know? I, I, I really don't have an answer. I mean, if we're not able to work it out, I mean, I guess, I mean, I would want to, my next plan of action would probably be to, uh, reach out to some local commercial brokers and see what we couldn't maybe lease the property for. Um, I know that I've reached out before, we, we actually looked at doing this, I'd reached out to L&amp;W Supply, which is essentially, uh, what that is now. It's a metal stud and sheet rock supply house, having quick and easy access to, uh, 64 Highway, I think, would, would, uh, make good use, having that alternate highway coming in. You certainly have, and it can handle 18-wheelers and it's zoned for that, too. Uh, there's a lot of things that property is zoned for, so I mean, there is a wide brush of things that could be there. Um, I think we could make the COVID vaccine there legally. Um, not sure that Johnson &amp; Johnson is wanting to lease that, but, um, uh, you know, but really, I mean, all jokes aside, I mean, if I'm looking at it from a, just a, a business perspective, um, you know, I think that there are a lot of businesses, uh, according to Norris Tolson with Gateway Partnership, I think there would be a high demand for some type of an industrial or some type of a commercial facility to acquire and, and utilize that whole facility. And I mean, then if we're looking at that, then I might be able to take advantage of the 10,000-square-foot building across the street. I mean, there's more than, you know, you can't let one dog stop to hunt. There's more than, uh, what was that gentleman's name? Uh, like Robbie Hendrick said, does that dog have papers? No, he can't read. I don't know, that's my buddy about to Tommy, but, um, it's more of an inside joke. But I mean, honestly, I, I, I think that we could, I think we could market it to some other businesses in the community that could utilize it and would fall under the industrial criteria that, you know, it currently has.
And could potentially demolish the building and do what they want with the land.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not on the historical registry, so I mean, there's no, you know.
I guess, I guess my point here is that we get so many benefits here, where we're restoring a historic building, we're revitalizing a dead part of town. The sheds that are dilapidated and falling onto themselves can be multifamily housing for luxury apartments. We have a built-in feeder to make that a success if they're there. We have something that young people are drawn to. We have something that young families are drawn to. There are a ton of benefits here. The, the tax base that increases for both residential and, and business development. Um, I do understand that there are some concerns and I think that those are things that we can work out with the individual property owners. You're completely, those are just my views.
We just need some more, some figures that aren't constantly moving.
And that's true. I think that we do need to nail down some figures. Tonight isn't about us saying, okay, we agree to spend $600,000 on this project. This is to agree that we are going to work with Mr. Hurt to make this come to life.
To work best for our citizens.
Right.
And, and there's a lot of grant opportunities out there. I mean, I've reached out and been talking with Susan Phelps, with, uh, Nash County Economic Development Director. And, uh, she's talked about grants that we can get to try to help offset some of these costs. You've also, I've talked to Randy about the Main Street Program, which I think, uh, Warrenton is a prime candidate for how that could potentially generate some additional, uh, grants and, and monies for the community. Um, I, I did want to point out just a couple of things. So the $1 that we were talking about was for a long-term, 25-year lease of that parking lot area. That's what we were talking about.
So 25 years, that's the first time we're hearing 25 years. When I was thinking long-term, I was thinking 100-year.
We could, I mean, look, it, we could, it's negotiable. I mean, look, this whole process is kind of, we're negotiating, we've been talking about it and, you know, I want to do what's best for the community. I mean, you know, it's going to have to be maintained and, you know, if we're going to have it as a parking lot, I think it, it, uh, you know, I would be willing to negotiate and talk about a longer lease agreement if that's what would be desired. Um, and this is the first time I'm seeing this, too. And if you look when the date is, this was dated April the 16th, so that's, that's been recent. This was like end of last week. So this is not something that I've seen and this is not something that I think Randy was familiar with until the estimates came in.
I think you just got those today, didn't you?
Well, I, I, I got them late Friday. The pack never really gone out.
Right, so I mean, this is, I just, it, we haven't had this for months, is, is my point. And there is a ser- serious, anybody in construction knows that cost increases are going through the roof. Uh, we just had a 40% increase on PVC within the last 30 calendar days. And those are real numbers. Inflation, I don't know, I think inflation's got a lot to do with it, too, but the cost of construction, i- i- it's, it's certainly a seller's market right now. Not, you know, not if I was built buying a house.
Something I do want to clarify on the parking lot, too, though. So this is intended to be public parking for the junction. And I think, too, we discussed that it would be overflow parking for, um, the potential revitalization of Barnes Street. So if we can get, get Barnes Street revitalized, people can potentially park there to do their shopping on Barnes as well, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And we're also looking at a way to potentially, the, the road on South Barnes Street, as it ties into railroad, we're looking at ways to possibly move the right-of-way as that is a town street, so that we can have more parking along the building as well. So essentially wrapping around the building because that is a state maintain, a town-maintained road and not, you know, like 64, state-maintained road.
The true front face of the building.
Correct. We can have that, we, we have that, you know, as far as working together, again, we, we have that luxury to be able to, to work for additional parking around the building, so. Um, there's, I mean, there's a lot of excitement, a lot of different things that we can do. And as far as the parking goes for the apartments, we've got that covered, uh, per the number of spaces required for that, so. On our side, man.
Any other questions? If not, um, so basically tonight, what we're looking at is approving this with making the, it'll fit for our citizens and working it out with our budget. Is that my understanding?
I'd like to see some hard numbers instead of--
We're moving forward with the concept, with the requirement of seeing some hard numbers. This is not agreeing on any numbers, but we're moving forward with the concept of working together with Mr. Hurt to develop something for the greater good of all of Nashville.
Right.
Is that a motion?
Do I, is that a motion?
I make that motion, yes.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor of it being done by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is, um, ma'am, your time is up. Yes. You may make one's.
Hold on, come up to the microphone.
I just want everybody here to realize that I am in total agreement with this fine project. I just don't see why the stage has to be such a huge--
I like your suggestion.
And that's--
Looking at. I mean, I just don't want it at my back door.
And that's what we're going to work on, things like that, Ms.--
Okay, I, I just want everybody to know. I want everybody here to know that it, that I'm totally for everything. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. I just want to take me and Edith into consideration.
Yes, and we will do that.
Um, did you have anything else to say, Randy, for the manager's report? It's all been said. Kate, do you have anything to add to our meeting tonight?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Um, and I know that a lot of people were here, um, to talk about things that they didn't like. Um, but the overwhelming, um, feel in here was of positivity and it was, uh, of respect, and so I, I really want to thank everybody for that.
Louise.
I appreciate you coming out and your input is very important. Showing up is very important. Um, but the numbers have to mean something. I hate numbers that are constantly moving. Uh, one thing, Randy, I'm concerned about our minutes. We're missing minutes for March 9th, March 16th, March 30th, and April 6th. We need timely minutes.
Please don't give them all to us at once.
Because we'll be getting five sets next time. That's too much.
We've, we've had many, many meetings. I know she's working very, very hard.
I know, but--
Yes, they will come when they're ready.
Um, just a matter of clarification, I think you may have left already, but while I mentioned the, uh, Showside Grill and those other entities, the point I was making was not to have something identical, but that we do need something going on in Nashville to help-- but that we do need something going on in Nashville to help us keep the community going, keep people involved, especially drawing these young people, that they're going to be the future of the town.
I, too, like, appreciate and thank everybody for showing up tonight. And, uh, and believe me, your concerns are my concerns as well. And I just want us to, we need to just shake some of these numbers up to make it look a whole lot better. I don't like the way the numbers are looking, but we're going to work on that.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, you're why Nashville is so great. You're good people. You're down-to-earth people. And we honestly care about one another, and I think that's why we're such a great town. And you did come tonight with your concerns, and you presented them in very professional manner. And we heard you. And we want this junction to be successful, but we don't want to hurt our citizens. Believe me on that. But thank you again for coming, and, um, we're here to serve you, and we want to do a good job serving you and making things better for Nashville. Thank you. The Nash County Council Meeting is adjourned.
You have to make a motion.
Do I hear a motion? I forgot to make a motion.
Second.